Third of twenty twenty-five, would everyone stand with me to say?
Member Liker?
Here.
Pacer?
Here.
Petroselli?
Here.
Stone?
Yeah.
Vidka?
Here.
Waterman Culpa?
Here.
Attorney Greco?
Here.
Back here. Palumbo?
I'm here.
And Liaison Han?
Here.
And is anyone had a chance to look at the October sixth, twenty twenty-five minutes? Do I have a motion to approve?
So.
A second?
Second.
And is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Motion passes six to zero. There's no this old business this evening, so we'll move on to new business. Log twenty twenty-five PB eleven for thirty-eight Main Street Site Plan Modification Review. We have someone here representing the applicants, describe what you'd like to do, and you can make a presentation, just for the record, state your name.
Andrew Moreno, Trigou Engineers, that was set from section on Shirley, fifty-eight hundred Main Street, and parking lot renovations. We're hereby requesting that this be tabled this evening due to the fact that we got a late review last week, and I was off and so we need to respond.
Okay.
As far as the actual application, we are requesting a definition for the front lawn as being repaired and re-stripped on, and not exactly that, repaired and re-stripped pavement.
Okay.
The rear lawn.
That can go in as part of the applicant then, and?
Well, yeah, they can't. They can't issue an opinion or an interpretation.
Understood.
He can.
So, what I would suggest is that I had provided you the first draft of my technical review, my staff report to the planning board. I will give you as soon as I find a copy the same one that the planning board has. I would suggest, just as we typically do, I would do a comment response letter with any revised plans, and you can make that argument, and we'll look at it. If the question is about the right to have front yard parking, that's not on the table. I've said it several times. What I raised about the front is that there is no definition to the driveway. There is no screening or buffer, landscape screen or landscape buffer between the parking stalls and the sidewalk. Those things are part of the site plan review. If you're saying it's not part of site plan review, then you can make that argument, and we'll look at that. But I'm not going to give you an answer standing here tonight.
Understood.
I don't know, I don't know what was done, because it was done before I knew there was a project, which is sort of why we're here.
Understood, yes.
Yeah, but I'll look at that.
The definition foundation, the code states that we can repair and repaint our parking lot. It's the reconstruction that brings us into.
If you put that in writing, I'll be glad to go over it. And here is, let me hand you this, because I didn't get around to doing a a specific letter.
The variance?
No, that's my review. The one I sent you was before that, so that's a later one, that's the same one that the planning board has.
Okay.
And if you give us time when we get revised plans, or with comment response letter, hopefully there'll be time I'll do a review before it gets to the planning board.
The concern was simply that the variants that have been granted to this building setback variants from the front yard, which allows for the front parking.
There's no question that the parking's allowed in the front yard, but that variance did not grant any relief to the landscaping, buffering, driveway, there's no definition to the driveway or curb.
Time that it was, the variance was granted, it was considered a non-conforming parking. It was left as is.
And if Section one twelve sixteen is triggered, then all that dimensional criteria, the dimensional standards come into play. I'm not, I'm not saying that there's an issue with the non-conforming use. The front yard can be there. Put it in writing, and we'll figure out if sixteen B is triggered for the front. Certainly is for the back.
Yeah, the back, yeah, we're not.
Hold on a second. You realize what you're arguing against is not putting in safety features. That's what you're arguing against. You're arguing not putting in screening and buffering that would protect pedestrians on Main Street. That's what you're arguing for.
Okay, look, if we're talking about a dispute as to whether the code is being interpreted properly or what a prior variance, that has nothing to do with this court, and it's not going to be done orally. Submit something in writing, Gary will issue a determination. Anyone who may disagree with that interpretation has a right to appeal that. This is only where it appeals. That's how the process works.
Mr. Petroselli, I think about the patient's safety as well. I understand you're saying there's concern for the safety of anyone who comes to the building, but there's also my patient's safety that I'm also able to work on.
But all it takes is one person who mistakes the, you know, the gas for the grave, and they're careening into the sidewalk, which isn't good.
To be fair.
Which wouldn't be good to your, hold on a second, which wouldn't be good to your patient even.
So we'll look at that when we actually.
If you look at what the purpose of this is, the purpose is to protect, is to protect people. That's the reason why these screenings and price, it's not just making.
Well, this is table for this evening, but I do, I think, I know, I was triplets here at the time. Gary, I don't think, I think you predated you. But I remember this project needing to go for a variance because of the height of the building. Yes, and it was determined that the faux second story, faux second story area. So I just like that to be like in mind when looking at the variance that was given, because I want to make sure we're looking at the right variance, and whether multiple variances were given.
You have the packet in your.
Right, but it's Gary's determination on how that's interpreted. But the variance that was given was given so that it didn't have to become a two-story building along Main Street.
It may have also been whether the building had to be moved up to Main Street.
Yes.
But again, I'm not, there's no point in talking about things without these documents in front of us, and this is not the venue for that determination.
So thank you, Andrew, for bringing that to Gary's attention. Gary will examine that after you submit something formally in writing to your argument, and I'll make a motion to table, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lolly, all in favor? Motion passes six to zero. I don't believe you're automatically on the next planning board. You need to, you know, work that out with Carol to make sure that you meet the deadline for the December first meeting, right? Okay, thank you very much.
Roughly two weeks, Andy?
Two weeks.
Yeah, because it gives us time.
Okay, moving on to log twenty twenty-five PB eighteen for thirty-seven South Caillouga, a site plan or a signage application. Is anyone here representing the property? If you'd like to approach the diastate your name for the record and explain what you want to do.
Hi, I'm Candy Jeffries, and this is Emily Jeffries, and we are dedicated therapists at Western New York, and in business for about twenty years, and we see, we provide services to developmentally challenged children from mostly birth to five, but then we have them up to about twelve years old. So this is our first location that we're leasing, we're leasing from Zappo Development, and what we're doing is providing services at the location, and it's just kind of like a home spot for our therapists and stuff to stop by, get materials, you know, see the location. We do a few parent-child groups with our early-on-aventure children. And so the reason for the signage is just more for, not to advertise, but more for like families to find our location. There previously had been a sign, a larger sign in the same spot. It's actually not the ideal spot for us, we like it actually on the other side, but there's a gas pipe right there, so we can't, we can't put anything there. I would also like to see a little bit of landscaping. Zappo would step up and do some, so.
We can make that part of the motion.
That would be great.
So the gas pipe, the gas pipe wasn't shown on the survey, so.
Okay.
Okay.
It's a pretty old survey, it was probably put in after. Unfortunately, we just only have what the leasing company gives us.
Okay. A suggestion to put the address at the top?
Other side?
Yeah, I mean, the video account of the, they put thirty-seven South Caillouga, like in black or something, right at the top.
Yeah, we did replace that. So also what a challenge was, is why we did the building sign was because there was a sign there previously, and it really discolored the very old building. So it just, we're just trying to make it look better, we put new lights in. We do, we do have black numbers above the mailbox on the right side, which I, you probably don't have a picture of that.
Yeah, it's set so far back, though, it's hard to see.
That's right.
Yeah, so maybe just a thirty-seven or something like right at the top, you know, towards the top, not right at the top, but towards the top, so that people can find it better.
Right, we do have an eight-frame sign, but I'm finding it, it's very heavy, so I'm finding it challenging to bring in and out of the steps every day.
This will replace your eight-frame.
Right, exactly, plus it's, you know, it's warmer in the winter, it gets wet, and then, you know, the only place they can bring it is back into the office.
Yeah, this will look cute with some landscaping underneath it, and, yeah.
And then the sign that looks like this one, I noticed on the left side of the door, on the wall, and that stays too, for me too.
That's what.
That's the one you were just saying.
Right, that's covered by, it's kind of just right beside it, so we're, you know, we're working with very old buildings, so we're just trying to make it look nicer, more kids' made and.
We like old buildings, it's all right.
Yeah. Yeah, you can push them up a little, but we don't have to look. We got Zappo to do a view from this to the building. Is it possible to put any type of surface landscaping on the other side because of the gas pipe, or I have to discuss that with Zappo?
We're only here to discuss a sign, and the sign requires landscaping, so we can talk about that, but as far as the whole landscaping bed, I think you're going to have to work out with your group.
Okay, so there will be landscaping required when the sign is ready?
Yes.
And then each one, the number on the top or the number and the street?
You know, wherever you think will get people to your business better. It seems like it needs something, because it's so far setback.
Number the number.
Yeah, it's kind of, people kind of live down that street, so, you know, when we're little children, and usually we try to have the pub in the back, but there's a lot of businesses back there, so they do have to sometimes park, or park in the process, so just trying to make it a little, until they don't stop in the middle of the street trying to figure out where it is.
Can you just confirm it's not illuminated?
Yeah, that it's not illuminated.
No. Oh, no.
It's not in the application, but not illuminated.
Materials are in there.
They crossed out illumination. So it's the dye bond. It was sided. It's the same range.
There's a sketch. Post may be that one. The contractor may be, the contractor may be specking that, but this is four feet from the top to the body. That's what we'll look for in the field.
Yeah, we'll make a motion to make sure that it's only four feet above grade. Everybody, do you have any other comments?
No.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve log twenty twenty-five PB eighteen thirty-seven South Caillouga, signage application as submitted with the following clarifications, that the ground sign will, at its post, be a total of, a maximum of four feet above grade, and that the applicant may add numerical street address or the thirty-seven South Caillouga to meet towards the top of the sign in black, and that there will be year-round landscaping under the sign placed, placed under the sign in the landscaping bed. And that can be submitted to the building department, and then we'll just quickly review it, and if we see a problem, then we'll get back out in touch.
Okay, so just to get the plan of what we're going to do under it?
Yeah, the landscaping plan.
Okay, then just because of the weather turning cold, or is there a worry about getting the sign in before the ground's frozen? Maybe the cement or whatever they do, is this approved now, or do I can tell if you go ahead, or do I have to wait?
No, we have to wait until your signage company approves or obtains a permit from the building department.
Okay. Okay.
So until they obtain their hand, it shouldn't start any work.
Okay.
Okay. So I, there's a motion. Was there a second? Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion passes six to zero. Welcome to the village.
Thank you.
Let's see, log twenty twenty-five PB nineteen thirteen South Caillouga signage application. Okay, if you'd like to approach the diastate for the record, state your name, and then just for the record, explain what you'd like to do.
Okay, I'm Robert Rocky, I represent the design company who's been asked to replace the existing sign that's up there on fifteen South Q, that's the same font, just a more durable substrate. This is the sample I looked through there. Dye on brand name, six mil. Big to cut on a CNC. Then that's the font that's up there, that's through the wall. They have to come here and explain the product, and there's a question in the email that Carol sent about illumination. It's not illuminated. Just what's up there.
And you said there, how many, what's the dimension from the brick to the signage? What's the post?
There's no post. This probably, this was on the wall, yes, that's a wall with done, with the back, it's drilled and tapped. Okay, and we'll see what studs come out. And then drill, match and call the pattern of what is the sign in letters through the wall, and then it doesn't really see the flexors.
So cap, sorry, didn't.
Just I would imagine what's up there now would come the same.
So it's kind of undetectable?
Yeah, there's no surface, it's a nice clean.
And you'll be able to fasten the dye on polygarbene in masonry mortar only?
No, it's passive, well, more or less it's done in any kind of surface, okay? It's what's holding it, it is pretty much the fact that you drill a hole into the masonry at work, and inserted with stud, with adhesive, and the stud is threaded in the back of the composite here, this is dye on.
Right, so right now, are there holes in the masonry that attach this wood to the building?
I would imagine, I don't think it's up to a bonding agent, adhesive. I imagine if you looked at that plywood that's been up there for well over seventy years.
We have a missing letter here, so we should be able to see.
That wasn't, that wasn't too recent.
You know, that you might see the head of a fastener, like a carat bolt or something, I have no idea, we didn't inspect it enough. That was our concern.
Nineteen eighty-one is the old one.
Oh, really? So a few years.
Can I just ask, the significance of the font, is it, is it the official logo of the insurance?
Font is what's on his business card.
Okay.
And then logo, and basically the name is, it's a logo.
Okay, and then the I, I am insurance.
Is it a lot? Are you looking at the photographs of the building? Then I would imagine it's a lot.
I'm sorry.
If there's no hole, there's no.
You don't see the hole, or it might have been, it's probably just an adhesive.
Look where the, yeah, look where this missing letter is, there's something, mucky-muck right there.
So this, the nineteen eighty-one says modern and mortar was true anger, so they tried to knock in the brick, so.
Yeah, the other leaders are not about to hold the brick to cut patches.
Right, and that's what, that's the only thing I would recommend as far as attachment goes, is mortar attachment only. We're not drilling into bricks with sleeves. And so what size are sleeves, because it seems like maybe they're bigger than the mortar joint, so what size are they?
I know sleeves. I know sleeves. No anchors.
The thing that you're questioning.
It's the bolt that's in the back of this, each letter. It's inserted in the drill hole with an adhesive.
Is it maybe a quarter inch bolt?
Is it that big? It is a quarter inch, so five, six inch hole maybe. And then.
Yeah, we don't fight it.
Yeah, 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 but you want the slide in the heart.
Thousands that we've done.
So it's a chemical anchor.
It's what?
It's a chemical.
It's an adhesive. I wouldn't do that, not technically, no, but it's an adhesive.
Well, so it's just being that, it's just what we do.
This, this.
So the plywood is.
Plywood or?
No, right, is this the only material?
This is plywood.
Right, the existing.
That was the original proof.
Okay, oh, okay.
So if there had been holes drilled into the rear masonry, then it would be very different, because if we, if we enforce the sign code, and in that instance, there will be holes up in the sign. But there's not, there may be holes up in the sign, or we don't know there are holes up in the sign.
Yeah, we did not saw that sign back, was it? It was one of them, yeah, we were around.
I'm looking for a confirmation to prove the signage choice, the sign is important.
Well.
It's the same as what it was.
It's the same as what it was, and this building is well over fifty years old. The sign is almost fifty years old. So I personally would like to see something reflective of the historic sign in the building.
Right.
What another issue that I have with the proposed material, though, is that I can see the polycarbonate. Unlike wood, which is painted on all sides, the polycarbonate is a black material, and then we have white skins on both sides. So what could be a solution for that?
Well, as far as I'm concerned, at the height that it is, the thickness that it is, the visibility, and who looks at it, walking by or driving by, that if you put a hundred people to walk by and say, "Look at this sign, tell me what it's made out of and how it's made," they would never even mention that the center is a polycarbonate. But that's my opinion, and that's why I'm just going to share that with you.
Is right at the head of the building, because it's pretty pedestrian, this building is very pedestrian.
Could it be painted? Could it be painted?
I mean, oftentimes what we do when somebody proposes something like an HDU sign, is that they place a cabinet around it in order to hide the HDU material when they've skinned it with something. Here, it's an unfinished material that we are going to be putting upon to the building.
Well, it's used quite often, it's been accepted in many, many towns. You can treat it any way you want, that's what we recommend.
Is there a white polycarbonate that they can put in the middle, so that it's visually? No. And that's what I thought it was going to be originally, I thought it would be a product, but it's not, it's.
I honestly don't think this will be noticeable. It's going to be attached right to the brick.
It's not, there's no offset, no setback, no shadow.
That sample is the actual wood.
You're looking at each, whatever file, whatever letter will be made up.
I mean, maybe it was a brick, but it's not.
I'm thinking if I'm looking at from the.
But you'd have to be right up against the building, because this is going to be flat up against that.
You have a planner in front.
Right here.
You have a two-foot planner in front of that sidewalk as well. And it's above the first story, so it's eight, eight and a half, nine feet above.
It's not little, like this third big one.
Huge. Yeah, I understand.
Just like the ones that are up there, same size, scaled out to be.
Yes, but painted on all the edges.
Well, it's three-quarter inch plywood, you had to paint wood.
Absolutely. I pressed it last week that long.
Yeah. I don't know how many times you went up there and had people go and paint it. I don't think the original paint was over looking.
What are you going to do?
Well, I don't think there's a solution, you can't break my finger, not prevention, but coating it to size.
I definitely do. Because we don't know how it's going to, what's going to happen, so that's a, a man.
Just seems like we set a precedent now for the next one that comes over.
Forty-five years?
I'm kind of amazed the village hasn't seen any other polycarbonate signs.
We have polycarbonate.
Yes. What other those? Other those?
They have not been face applied to a building, they have been in a cabinet. Because I'm not, I mean, I'm not a signage expert, I'm just an architect. I would not design something in that mixture, I don't think that's the right application, but that's my opinion.
Well, what other material is there, what could be white, if it's in my place?
Customer asks for a durable, long-lasting material, and this is what we recommend. We're not using acrylic, because it would not last.
Okay. So there's no alternate to this application.
Not that I would recommend. I mean, you've got, you've got edges of all the bricks, and we said mortar, we got all those edges.
And this is the sign.
I know. It's flat, I can create a shadow.
It's been there for a hundred years. You've designed a durable sign, it's going to be there for a hundred years. So the decision we make tonight has to be a solution that will show the village for a very long time.
What the customer is looking for.
I'll make a motion to approve as soon as.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
In accordance, in accordance with chapter eighty-five dash five C four, the planning board may waive any characteristics, any requirements of this chapter upon showing by the applicant that unique characteristics of his or her property render strict application requirements impractical, and if such waiver is consistent with the overall intent of this chapter. So. Well, it's the same, it's the same thing you've used for all the other sign waivers.
Well, what I'm saying here, there's nothing about the building or anything that that makes it impractical for a smaller sign up.
Well.
Technically, this is small, it's thinner. Technically, this is smaller, it's thinner, and like.
No, no, it's two square foot. It's two square foot, the village only allows fifty square feet.
Well, if there's a historical factor to consider, if that did spend over that long.
If your owner would like it landmarked, I can sell that somewhere.
I can't recommend what Dan likes.
Right now, it's not a local landmark. So if it was a local landmark.
He's a local. Dan's son. Didn't hear all, more than all, longer than all.
I, I mean, we just have to, I mean, if we're gonna give a waiver on one, particularly something that fits the code, that says this is the basis of the waiver, and, um, if, if we're going to say it's because it's somehow distorted, that doesn't seem to fit the code, then it has to be a landmark building that goes to be conceived.
I don't think so, it's eligible, because it's over fifty years old.
Right.
You're right, but what I'm saying to you is that we can't, we can't decide to give a waiver, based on the fact that it always looked like that.
Well, that's their practical argument, is that we've had a sign of this size for so long, we're trying to keep the same size for business purposes. I, I, I don't know, I can't speak for the applicants. Um, everything Mark and I talked about is that it's slightly smaller than the original.
What do you say?
Right, I mean, if I knew that there were holes in the brick, and this was, and if we trumped the sign and we can cover the holes in the brick.
But we don't, we don't really know that there are, well, imperfections in the, in the letters are talking about. We don't know that. We can see something, we don't know that. So if we said, oh, we'd have to make it smaller, without knowing that, I mean, that is what could happen.
Right, but again, as you said, we don't know that.
Go rip a letter off the building and find out what's under it.
Well, look under the, uh, the, the dot then.
Well, this, this, this letter's missing, there's something there.
I do believe if you don't cover up what was there, you just need a long period of time it's been there, and then all the light, these exposures, you're gonna have a shade difference, you're gonna have to color it with this.
That's the, that's the practice.
Are you gonna remove these and use them as templates for their, for how you're gonna replicate it?
I don't think you're that edit it, but we've already laid out the image, okay? And that did a very good job of duplicating.
So what I, what I'm hearing then, just make sure I got this right, what I'm hearing is that if you're in, when you're in the old sign, if you can't cover it up with the new sign, if with the marks and stuff in the brick, that would be more unsightly than if we, than if you.
I wouldn't know that, I don't really think that.
Well, it is probably, just because of weather, use of weather, light, that's probable. I don't have a problem with matching what was up there in size, I do have a dramatic problem with the material that's being proposed. What is the durability, um, what's the length of time that an acrylic sign is expected to, to last?
I couldn't answer that for you, every environment is different.
Well, it's an east facing, non- windward sign.
I'm not even gonna try to guess.
I mean, it's plastic, it's not been degraded in a landfill for fifty years.
Plastic, it's all with studs, you've got everything from wind, environment, I'm not even gonna hear it.
Right, but I don't think we need a sign that's gonna last three hundred years on the, on the side of the building. I think that we need to pay attention to detail, and, I mean, we could say, well, there's always wood, we could just duplicate what's there. Um, if this lasts for forty years, then, you know, who's to say that it wouldn't last for another forty, um, if it was duplicated in?
What, what about a product like polywood? It was solid colored.
Polywood doesn't have the strength?
Gotcha.
Okay, and the dimensions that it is? All right, it's basically a composite sawdust.
Right.
We've never used any in signage?
Gotcha.
So what I, what we typically use if someone is really open on not, um, using ACM, which is, ACM basically is a lower cost, lighter weight replacement for aluminum, you could use thick aluminum, um, and it will last just as long, but it's significantly more costly and a lot heavier.
Up there.
I mean, we've done that before, I mean, it's, it's really.
You've got three quarter under there now, with your notes? Historically?
Three quarter. Yeah, I mean, that would be excessive weight, but, but I mean, it's not my, I'm not trying to.
Yeah.
It costs much more. Right, it, it, you can paint ACM, I mean, it's a polyethylene core, and it's real old.
It's covered here.
Yeah.
Oh, it's painted.
Exactly, I mean, it's just the problem is that the factory finish is so nice, you'd wanna paint it without.
Yeah, you can't beat the factory finish. Environment.
And what I've, what I've been able to find, it says acrylic signs will last five to ten years, unless they're UV resistant, then it's ten to fifteen. So I would, I would argue that it's probably not long lasting enough for this kind of a sign.
I agree.
Well, is there any other through color material that you could propose that wouldn't just be skins that do not match the interior core, besides for the ACM?
I mean, like you said, you could go straight aluminum, three eighths, six mil, whatever, then I'm telling the customer it's four times the price.
Well, but they're gonna, they're gonna get a longevity out of the sign.
They're gonna get longevity out of this at one tenth the price.
So if you painted the edge of this, you're saying you could paint the edge of this?
Yeah, I mean, there's.
Okay, but there is, was something that will stick to it?
I mean, there are, but again, you're, you're increasing the cost, so it's, I don't know enough details to really make, I mean, I would talk to them.
Gotcha. So the reason that they're here this evening before us is because the view's missing, the two dots to the eyes.
No, you wanted it upgraded. It's all of a sudden, you said, "Look, I'm tired of painting the plywood, it's falling apart," so can you do it? And we recommended this.
You have a motion to, sorry, Wes.
The, the motion was not complete, I think it's not included, the waiver that's been there. So let's talk about the waiver. So we're in discussion under the, um, kept the motion, so the discussion is that the waiver was not included in the motion, so then I think, we need, what do we need to do for that motion? So would you rescind that motion?
Motion, and then you come up with a waiver, make it.
Okay, okay, so then we're looking for another motion that excludes the waiver.
What more do you need for the waiver?
I don't need, I think, I, I, I think Tom started to, to put it together.
Well, my, my, right, right, the waiver, the waiver would have to be, I'm, I'm trying to find justification for it, which is why I was asking questions to get you there. Um, because, um, wanting the sign to be bigger than allowed is not good enough for me. I, I think the waiver would have to be based on what we would perceive to be underneath that, what it would look like if we shrink that sign, what the brickwork, what, what, the brickwork now be unattractive, and perhaps there's damage and things like that, so would it have an impact on the building? Um, I mean, that, that was coming from the study, but having, removing, when you remove that sign, putting something up that isn't almost exactly the same, so it'd have an impact on it. So I could make a motion to waive the site, the size requirement, um, on the building, on the sign, in order to, as long as it matches what's there now. Exactly, so that covers up the brick that's been exposed. That would be a waiver I would, I said it very coffee.
It was.
But. Then you.
It was. I think, I think it's the right thing, about the waiver, because there's definitely, in my opinion, when anything comes down, that's been up on anything for any extended period of time, it would be, you know, the ghost of that, and, um, the building. So we don't want that.
Got a second?
A second.
Who's second?
That was a motion.
That was a motion.
Yeah, it was a motion for the waiver.
So that was for the waiver only, not on the sign?
The waiver only.
Yes, okay.
So if we issue the waiver, then we're over the size problem. That's at least one problem.
So that was a second, so any discussion? So we're ready to go down the, I roll down the way, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So that, the waiver, um, passed six to zero. Okay.
Well, make a motion to approve the sign as submitted, with the, with the waiver.
A second. Any discussion? I still feel that's an improper material for the building, I think that there's offset issues from what the existing material is, I think that, um, there's.
Thickness? Thickness issue?
I think that there's heavy shadow lines of, of what's there now, meaning that the material is one inch thick, that's what's giving it its shadow appearance. With that material at a quarter inch thick to be applied, um, flat against the building, I think, I think it's gonna have a dramatic difference in, in what it looks like. And the whole reason for, the whole reason for, um, well, not the whole reason, but it sounded like a major component to the waiver was that, you know, it's what was there before, it's what, you know, it's a character defining feature of a building, what we could call it. Um, and you could see, like, in these letters, these fine letters, there's a lot of imperfections. Um, I think all of that would be lost in, in the new, um, material that's being proposed. Um, it's, it's just, it's a, it's a very crisp, fine, um, silhouette of the letters, um, that will be produced. Um, it's a process of aluminum, um, polycarbonate, which is very different, and I do think that the edge condition is, is a, a dramatic difference, especially being about eight feet above, above grade, very close to a sidewalk, um, because it is a village building, um, on one of our, you know, commercial civic areas of the village.
Yeah, I, I can't say that what you said was that good, but where are we gonna go, I'm sure. Should we just say, would letters back up?
I, I, I don't, I'm, I'm worried a little bit of the reflects, the reflectivity of the materials, it, that's where it's gonna look very different than like in Detroit, because it's gonna be much more hard to reflect. And, no, I don't think that's gonna have dramatic, correct, probably, a traffic problem or something, but I do think that it will, um, make, it make the sign and building look very different. Now, it could also be that's just what I'm used to seeing, but, but I think if you're putting up a much more reflective material, it, it could change what we're gonna do.
And when it, can I just ask, when it, when it's cut, there's no, because we've only seen it in cabinets, there's no chance that it'll fray on the edges at all, or chip them.
So it's an IC router bit, it's a CNC cutter. If, if there was any care on it, we, we continue cutting the, the letter, we change how it is. Quality, I love, I was shocked.
But what if he did do, these letters, do you do that?
It's up to him, if he wants to hire us to do it, he would, yeah.
Okay, so how would they?
I was asked to be here to answer a few questions about the illumination.
I'm just asking you about.
I can't answer, you can answer.
I'm asking you to say about the, the creation of, you can make it in wood?
Make it out of wood, yeah.
Put it up, put it up the same way with the, whatever you, right up against the building, the way you were saying about how this would be.
It could be studied, yes.
And it could be painted white?
And any color?
So why don't we just ask the guy?
I think we've aired on the sign list.
This is good for us.
So it's either up or down on this sign?
Or table.
Or table, I think, to be fair though, we'd have to, you know, the applicant would have to ask for a table, and you can, that's a really good reason to be hot, um, we can take what we see.
So we gave the waiver. We're gonna, we're gonna give the waiver.
So, so the size, no matter what the material is, the size, you know, the sport that you're trying to pass, we'll go forward with what is there now.
So we're not gonna approve the material?
Well, we have no, we have no.
So can we, I don't know, can we say, come back with another idea, like wood?
Well, this is being reported, and, and then, I'm sure this gentleman will give the full report.
Yes, well, I mean.
Based on the illumination and.
Yes, you were asked to discuss.
I just, really just technical questions, I can't speak for the party.
Of course, yeah, yeah, so I can, I, I don't really know this particular scenario. So there was a, there was a first, there was a second, this is the discussion, so we do, we discuss or vote? So, okay, so can we do a roll call?
Member Laker?
Um, hi. Oh, wait, so I'm gonna say, guys, we're gonna go.
The motion will.
As presented.
As presented.
I have all this other conversation, so I have to say.
Pacer?
Yes.
Petroselli?
Uh, no.
Stone?
Yes.
Vidka?
No.
Waterman Kopa?
So the motion fails, um, to the court. So there's a waiver that's been granted, motion for this sign was denied, and then I suggest that the applicant reach out to the building department for next steps they choose to do.
Do you have a stated reason why it's, never mind, it's not, nothing doesn't move to be denied.
It was reflected in the. Or, or.
Yeah, your stance.
It was about reflectivity, it was about, um, shadow lines, it was about, um, the perfectness of the material that was being proposed versus, um, more vernacular boards that's, that's currently installed, when the waiver was based on what was there.
Is it? Is the waiver for the size of this sign then?
Yes.
As opposed to any new one that comes in?
Good question, attorney, go. So the waiver was given for this.
I think it has to be for this and or less.
The waiver.
All right, what is the question about the waiver?
If the size of the sign that was given a waiver is for this sign or any sign?
It's up to you, I, I can't imagine why it would be different based on, but that's not, you tell me.
They came in with a bigger sign.
Well, that's, that was the point that we waived.
But the waiver, waiver specifically said that it has to be assigned, assigned.
When, the waiver was granted for a total square footage of a hundred and thirty-five point two square feet, and that's what the application said.
I did not understand the word to be basing a waiver on having anything to do with the material, it was just, it's not, but that's, was my understanding, if that's not correct.
So is it, is it this sign that the waiver goes with? Or is it like if they came in with something completely different of that size, like let's say it's a, a panel sign that's suddenly there, that's Wally's question.
The application says that it's too large, it's a hundred and thirty-five feet. I'm not the sign officer, but I would think another sign that's a hundred and thirty-five square feet or less, waiver would apply, but that's up to Mark. We need a new application for new material, I think, or a new, a new detail, you know, it's the new detail.
But we gave the waiver at nine minutes for individual letters to keep the look that we're doing.
Yes, I think that was very clearly stated, that it was about this sign. That it was about this sign in this look, in this font, in these sizes. That's what I believe was the...
Yes, but that was...
Right, so we just wanna make sure that's interpreted correctly by the signage officer when he evaluates this.
If they come, so in other words, if they come forward with a completely different...
Say Arial font, right? It's not the same size as what the waiver was given for.
Or the application.
Or what I was, well, what I was imagining, instead of individual letters, just a...
It's not really a font, it's a logo. We recreated the logo, but the size it is and the spacing that those letters are.
And I think that's what the, was the same, the waiver was based on that. But that's, we're still interested in seeing that.
It was Dan's concern that what goes up covers what is behind it.
Right. Which, which was called out in the waiver. But, but okay, so now here's, but here's the question. So they'll probably have to have a new application, right?
I don't know. Not necessarily.
Well, they need a new application.
It's for the table. No, you denied it.
You denied it.
New amended, we're not gonna charge him another...
No, 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 my point is, is that if that's the case, is that a divorce? Do they, do they have to come in here and we have to give them another waiver?
I, I don't think so.
Are you allowed to recommend the material that you want?
Sure, if they want to.
Then tell Dan to send him, whatever, send him a letter or whatever. You say the board would like it in this material. Just a question.
Is there some type of coating you can put on to, let's say it was wood in replacement? Is there some type of coating you can put on it for longevity?
There's exterior grade paints, coatings, yes, that can be put on there. Whatever the warranty is by the brand, you know, what would be covering that period of time.
Right, prep time and painted, you could expect, you know, ten years out of it.
Most of the paint expertise I have is the Almobil grade paint. Okay, but you don't use on wood.
Right.
There are very few wood signs anymore, okay? And like your sign behind you, MBO, it's a meancy fiber or it's an urethane. And therefore, wood signs, yes, they do make them, the sandblast, you know, redwood for that. And they don't last more than 15 years, depending on the exposure. The grain separates and the paint peels off and the gold leaf disappears. So, yeah, paint is paint. It's great, we can really improve it, but it has a period.
I think the takeaway though is not, is there some mystery material we have in our heads? I think, I think the takeaway here is that the problems with this material have to do with its composite nature, where you can see that, and its reflectiveness. And if you can solve that in a different way, in a different material that meets our standards, then we're clear with it.
Well, and I think that's what you need to somehow compose and send to Dan. This is what you're looking for. This is what the village is looking for.
What the village is looking for. Yeah. What I'm saying to you, what I'm saying to you is, I'm not gonna sit here and go research materials for you. All right? You know the problems with this material, so find another material that meets the standards and, and doesn't have the same drawbacks.
Because this, this one, yes, it's thin, it won't get the same shadow as the building. And so it's thickness, sheen, sheen. Well, that's basically, sheen.
Yeah.
I mean, keep in mind, the waiver we granted was based upon the fact that we wanted to look like what's there so that the building doesn't undergo a very big negative change. Right, so that's, so that's why this is so important. It's not atrocious in any way. It's that if we're going to give you the waiver that says, you know, based on that standard, you need to go ahead and find a material that also fits within that view of what the signage is going to be.
Well, we can't be guessing yet. We gotta get some direction.
We have direction though, about thickness and sheen and solid color.
I want, I want direction in material.
But that's not...
Yeah.
No, you, it was wood, you said wood.
That could be material. Could be a material. Wood seems to, um, using Lex-Droid for solving, it could be a solution. It could be a solution to the problems identified with the proposed material.
Could be.
It could be.
If we file again, go with wood. There's no say it will be.
Does anyone have a problem with wood? Does anyone?
Okay.
It'd be a lot of help, it'd be a lot of help for Dan to understand what you're looking for.
The thing is, they don't probably have a problem with wood.
Ah, well, I mean, a few of the problems you initially described, you could solve on that material by painting it with a matte finish paint, putting standoffs on the studs. And if you're painting the front, then painting the sides makes sense. So I mean, the material they picked is great material.
It is.
If you're set on having a thicker material, wood, it's far less durability than acrylic. Or, you know, you could use HDU, but I mean, there aren't a lot of options that check out both factors. So I think he just wants you to either specify or, I mean, if it were me, I would paint it and use standoffs. You guys need it to be thicker and need the edges to be consistent and don't want a sheen. I'd use a satin paint and you have them standoffs and there you go. A lot of going around, but I think that would solve all the problems.
Next item on the agenda is...
Can we have St. Carol have what was submitted? We don't have that in the file. Materials that were submitted to you tonight are not part of the application.
The material?
No, the drawings, the graphics you received.
Uh, marketing units of this.
They were put with the application. I know, he handed them out, but I don't think they ended up with a copy. Okay, but no, I just took them out of the application.
Do you see?
Okay, next item on the agenda is... Lot 20, 25...
This I have, this I don't have.
21. For 5813 Main Street, a signage application, someone's come forward, say your name for the record. You can say what you like to do.
My name's Kurt. I'm with Crystal City Signs out of Rochester, working for a national company out of Texas. We're just a installers, but we do better things by having knowledge. Bronky Agency was, I don't know how it even was, but they moved under the umbrella of Ensure One, which is a more national sign company brand. And they are looking to replace the old plastic letters on the wall with channel letters. What they would ideally like to do is use full front light and table with channel letters for the faces of glow, they like internally, but then there's a glow behind them, behind the brick. So they're not, married to that is the only option.
So we have both details here. Was it in, in either? Because that was confusing to me. Is it looking from one of these?
I think, honestly, I don't know what the difference, oh, on one of these, it has the...
Polycarbonate.
Yeah, the raised circle, that's just for the logo itself. It's got a raised circle coming out. So there's just some more depth of the face, whereas the rest of the letters are flat faces. So that, that left hand cross section only applies to the shield. Whereas that, that white circle is raised off the back there.
Okay, and then, so they're internally illuminated and a halo?
Ideally, I mean, that's what they typically do for their brand.
So we don't do internally illuminated?
That's, that's...
Simplifies it.
That simplifies it.
Is that what this picture is?
Yeah, that's what they...
That's the not internally, this is the table.
Yeah, that's just halo. I didn't prepare the drawing, I mean, I personally found it a little confusing as well. But yeah, that shows a halo, it doesn't show the internal. But I, the internal here is really only on the shield and auto home business. The white part of the insurance letters actually is black at night with a halo around it. But I mean, halo, I mean, halo lighting is still an illuminated science. If you don't do illuminated, then...
We don't do internal illuminated.
Okay, do you allow halo?
We do.
Yeah, so if the illumination is not coming through the sign face, you know, that's not correct.
Okay.
So the auto home business is actually though, the first detail, the reverse channel logo section.
Yeah, I mean, on this, on this illuminated section, I believe this is the second iteration, the only lighting on this version is the shield, around the shield and around the boards and shield.
Okay, so auto home business is not illuminated?
No, not at this point. Nah, I'm guessing they changed it because they don't allow internal illumination.
Yeah, so the nighttime look with the red, the shield that has channel one?
Yes.
The red doesn't show it then either?
It, it, there's no way to do it, but it would not.
It's more like that little inset on page four.
Yeah, and that small...
You have, you have the smaller graphic on the left side of page four. And by day, it's like...
So going back to this halo interpretation here, where the shield glows. The shield is the largest part. So this, is this a typical detail or does this as not actually what's happening here?
You're letting me question?
So the shield is the largest part of this, right? The detail shows the polycarbonate being smaller than the box that the halo comes out of.
So the raised part on the shield is the circle. The white circle is raised off. The, the black part of the shield is solid illuminated.
Does the one and the interior white, do they glow?
They do not.
They do not. So what part of only the exterior of the shield glows?
Yeah, I mean, that's all that they're allowed.
So is this even work as a detail, the reverse channel logo section?
That's something I'll have to go back with the designer about, because I see what you're saying. Only, I'm wondering if their intention was to have those rings around the one and the one light up, but if you don't allow that, then that's not gonna be an option. And they should really almost only, either only like Ensure One or go not only here. Right? I mean, it's just, there's no point in having just a shield glowing on the wall.
Right.
It's a little difficult in these situations because I'm not, you know, I'm an extension of, I'm a installers.
Okay, so we've got a shield that's on halo lit and the words Ensure One, Halo Lit, nothing else. And then we've got your colors that are selected for your sign on sheet four. Auto Home and Business. How is that constructed? Is that a cabinet and how, what, how is that done?
It's a flat aluminum panel. And then it has half inch flat cut out letters on it, sticking on it. And then letters are flush mounted to the panel. And it's all stud mounted, similar to the West gentlemen, you know, that the studs are attached to the back, use a mounting pattern. You know, I heard you ask him a question and I didn't hear you further ask it. But you were asking if a stud mounted installation can be designed to only mount through an order. Yep, which can be done. I mean, it's a little difficult with multiple rows, but it's definitely doable.
What about Bronky Agency, where that gets your...
So I, I told the, when I surveyed it, I informed them that we're gonna have to do a wall restoration on that. I'm not sure what the mounting pattern is on the back of those letters. I'd have to pull them off and old plastic letters become brittle, so I can't do that. And so we're ready to replace it, but the intention is to patch it needed or just re-mortar sections and then paint, paint it like break to break, in this case, paint a beautiful wall.
Is there some leather in it?
I mean, I, I do installations in all leather. Painting, you know, it does help to have warmer temperatures, you know, I have to at least get in the 50s. So yeah, I mean, I'd say there is a small window left in the, in the ceiling.
So the wall restoration, do we have the exact paint color? And what happens if the paint started to fade and things like that?
Well, in this way, I believe we have to paint the entire wall. At least, at least break to break, like if there's a corner, you know, we can match the color, but we'd have to at least go to where there's a natural line to break up the color difference.
So it is already painted, right?
Yes.
It is probably painted like a moonish color, if I recall correctly.
So the entire facade below the ribbon windowsill is going to be painted on the west facade?
Correct. I mean, I will ask the landlord for the color. I mean, I requested that, that our, gives that information to you. But I'm guessing there's some significant weather in there. And if it's significant enough, I mean, we could just paint that entire wall.
Yeah, you have no weather issues for painting?
It's something I've done, and I even thought about this recommending it for the purpose of the install is the yellow letters you needed to leave when you reached weather.
Yeah.
And any of that interior wall is exposed, I may have to box that in. So a lot of times what I personally like to do in these situations is put a backer on it, like a one inch deep, two inch deep aluminum pan, mount everything with that. It sells quicker, hide any issue behind it. And I think that would work in this place as well.
Because even if you really want to hide it, maybe the same color as the clothing.
Right.
Well, but we do need restoration after removing, so before another sign goes off.
Yeah, I mean, I'd still, you'd still wanna seal everything, make sure.
Well, structurally and, you know, aesthetically, you can't just hide, hide, hide an issue and then have it be a feature.
Right, no, that makes sense. So we still wanna paint the wall.
So yeah, how are you going to propose lighting each of these letters? That's, that's a lot of holes going through your, your...
Yeah, but yeah, there would be one additional hole per letter. That would be difficult to do through the mortar. I mean, I've done it before, but it's, it's very challenging. It requires mapping out the wiring once the letters up there. It's a manually used letter. And there is usually a variable that can leave though behind that, where you wanna hit the drop ceiling of the bottom floor, you know, before you get above it, so you can hide the wiring. You know, if that's...
It's a pretty short building.
Right, I mean, if that's...
Is there drop ceiling?
In this office, I know there isn't.
Okay.
I mean, if, it's doable, it's difficult, but it could be done.
Well, and it's probably gonna make a mess out of the building. So is it something that you'd like to propose to them, possibly putting a cabinet around Ensure One so that you don't have to do all of that?
Absolutely, I mean, I think you would have to put it around the, behind the entire design to make it look consistent with the... But yeah, I mean, I think, I think that would simplify the installation, given the requirements you guys have in terms of damaging the building.
I'm just looking at size.
Fourteen feet. Fourteen nine thirty.
Much more than fifty.
Oh, it's much more than fifty. Oh, no, it's fourteen total.
Yes.
Fourteen total.
I think it's actually smaller.
Oh, fourteen nine.
Three feet, so.
Wow, man, yeah.
Yeah, so there's still, even if they take this, um, wall restoration, because there's still gonna have holes all over from the previous letters. Um, so I think, I think that the idea of moving to a cabinet is because you're for the fear of your, um, you're requesting the halo lit letter. So the wall restoration would still need to be done, the painting, all of that, when you remove the, the existing signage. And then it's probably for ease of installation over the winter as well as, um, as the internally illuminated component. So.
So, so with that, um, if they were to eliminate the illumination, they could move the dimensional lights. If they want to have illumination, you need a backer. In the event that say they wanna go with a backer, um, does that require a return to like another month's board meeting?
Probably, because we need actually.
Yes, no, no, I, I just, I just wanted to have you.
Yeah.
Given the, um, time sensitivity of restoring the wall and, uh, is it feasible to, if you're old sign down, restore the wall and then do a temporary sign?
They don't need a permit to remove the sign because they're not a landmark, so they, they can remove the sign and prep the wall as property maintenance, I assume. Yeah, so you, they can start that. It's the actual sign that replaces what's up there now is what needs a permit.
And if they ask me about a temporary sign, is that?
Then they can go to the building of harvest, secure a temporary.
Yeah.
It's the moving duration.
Yeah, right.
All right. Sixteen years.
So a temporary sign.
Sign which is not.
You can do a temporary sign for thirty days. You can have one. Uh, the maximum area is twenty-four square feet. Maximum height of the temporary sign is six feet and a temporary sign does or does not have to go to the planning board. It does not, that's the whole point. So it's in the code.
Alrighty, so.
But it is a permit to the sign officer.
So, I.
Would you like us to table this this evening?
Yes, yes, we'll table this. I'll give some adjusted information and drawings and, uh, we'll be back.
Okay, so, good. So I'll make a motion to table log twenty twenty-five P B twenty, uh, number one for the sign application. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then log twenty twenty-five P B twenty, I'm sees two for fifty-eight thirteen Main Street for window decal, signed waivers is not being discussed this evening. Oh, that's on my old agenda. It's on my agenda. So then you're all set this evening. Thank you very much.
Wait, the thirty days can be extended up to two times.
And, and, um, unrelated, because I know it's not being discussed, but, um, where do the windows stand? Is it?
You need.
It's not here. It's not what the planning board, we were told.
I'll, I'll, I can talk to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving on to last item, twenty twenty-five P B twenty-one for one oh nine les. Then the fence application is at the district. The post diet is stating the roster of houses we'd like to do.
Jason Johnson, homeowner, one on the bank. Just wanted to put up a, uh, private effects, which purchased the house, uh, June. And, uh, I wanted to put up a slide in the property.
So we have a copy of survey with the line drawn on it. We also have a copy of what the, the fence could look like. Clarification, you have both five foot and six foot. It is a six-foot fence?
Comfortable to six foot, yes.
Okay. Um, and then do you have dimensions from the front and the side property lines? How do you look like your fence to go?
From the front is greater than fifteen feet. I would say it's always closer to thirty feet. I was focusing more on where I wanted the fence and not how far it is from the, from the, uh, street. But from the, uh, side property line, it'd be roughly a foot off the property line.
What's, what's drawn? What's drawn is about.
Twelve feet, eleven and a half.
Yeah, I was gonna say twelve feet from the front property line, not thirty. If you go thirty feet back, you're halfway behind the house.
Yeah, it looks like.
That's not what you drew. You didn't draw flush to the front of the house either.
No, it wasn't, yeah, to this portion here. I don't have the, I don't have the dimension.
Seven point seven plus four point three.
Okay.
So it's about twelve feet.
About twelve feet. Yeah, I think you're thinking out to the edge of pavement.
If you're starting at this point.
Right.
Yeah.
You have a four-square American.
Mm-hmm. Yes, right here.
Nineteen twenty-five.
It's in the, it's in the statute.
Good question. The property line splits it. No, I don't think it was.
So that foot is to take there to keep the vegetation advice. And, and you're going to have to move here to maintain it?
Yes.
Don't want.
There are a couple of trees that we don't wanna cut down, but we wanna maintain that. It also looks boring enough.
Five hundred. For the quarters.
So.
One foot?
So you've got your enclosed front porch area and then you wanna start the fence where the house proper begins, not that, that enclosed porch.
Right.
Okay, so then that's.
Uh.
Which is two to.
Four point three nine plus seven point seven nine is twelve point two. Well, it's the corner of the house. Not the porch, enclosed porch.
Right. And then it goes, you know, a short distance somewhere in here.
Thirty-two feet is what's stated on the application.
Well, it's, it's inconsistent because one of the, um, supplementary documentation says twenty to twenty-five, so we'll, we'll clarify that. So it's.
Are you trying to get to the next major garage?
Yeah.
That's where the fence goes.
Okay.
It's a G five. Last.
Sixties.
We have several.
This will start itself property, so I don't know who's gonna be moving in, but I'm sure it's going to be another rental property. You know, not sure we're going into the warehouse behind us, because we have but the old warehouse there. Well, people walking by and everything. There's a picture there that shows like, you can see from our back deck, the house they store in and the house across the street grocery, plus street traffic and anything else.
So would you like us to put a dim, a dimension for the length of the fence or state from the corner of your house to the, to the, a corner of the, um, the neighbors from their garage?
Yeah.
Take the, the zoning. So this isn't the site plan review. This is just a, a sign permit. In the sign section, does not.
Fence, fence.
Sorry, the fence section. This is not a site plan. The fence section just says you have to review it for whatever I stated in my report. Character.
Character material.
It, the, the fence section does not have setbacks. So they could be right on the property line. They can go from, they can go from where they're staying in front. That would be important. Um, do the three feet in front yard, uh, that's not an issue, but they can go all the way down to the, to the back property line. So the length of the fence isn't as important as where it is starting in front. Yeah, and it, it's not in the required front yard. It's, we don't have to worry about it being three feet. It can be one foot off the property line or it could be on the property line, um, but it can go south all the way to the property line.
So where they stop doesn't make a difference.
Where they stop doesn't make as, as much of the difference as where they start in the front.
Okay, and then the, um, the type of fence, does it have a good side and a bad side? Are they both identical?
They're both identical.
Will the post be on your side of the fence?
Yes.
Are there any other questions?
No.
So I make a motion to approve twenty twenty-five P B twenty-one for one oh nine les, a fence application in Amity District with a lot of clarification. They have the applications for six-foot privacy fence as submitted in exhibit A. And it is to start along the eastern property line, zero, zero one feet off of, of, of the property, um, line to the east and being set back from the, um, northern front property line of twelve point one eight inches.
Feet.
Feet. Sorry. Twelve point one eight inch, or feet. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Looking past the six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, it's more an register.
Yeah, I still have my arms back, so thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Okay. So last one we have on the resume is the twenty twenty-six, um, review of schedule. Twenty twenty-six schedule review. Um, and as this committee has already reviewed it and asked for a lot of attention that is reflected on the proposal sheets and has requested at the beginning of the meeting that, um, future meetings starting in January, um, start at six-thirty for sketch plan and seven o'clock for the actual planning board meeting. Um.
Six thirty.
Working on a revision, sketch plan, or working on, or, or pre-planning meeting at six thirty and the actual meeting starting at seven, um, for the twenty twenty-six. Does anybody have any requested modifications to the schedule? If not, we'll consider it approved by the board and, and we're interested in hearing that. Okay, anybody else have any other, um, items or information for the meeting this evening? Seeing none, then I'm going to move into adjournment second.
Second.
By someone and all in favor, five, looking past the six zero.
So then what was this, people still interested in registering for those night things?
I did, my wire register is ready to watch.
Those night, um, I mean, they're coming up.
Three, four, three hours by the end of the year, right? Four.
Four. Which you can get with all, with those night offerings, but I don't know where the status of the funding is.
Well, I know, I know that there is funding for at least one person, but my understanding is that, um, and Nick can verify that I guess that between the boards, you can, if nobody from another board takes that money, then they can go between the boards.
Yes, I don't know. If somebody knows, I, I would just say I would recommend them. They're very good.
I think I put you on that email.
If, if you have, um, like an excess amount of, of credits, does it roll over to?
Carryover, you know what?
There's a certain, yes, they do at this board.
Cause I just had one that was fifteen credits.
Oh. Oh, where?
It was, uh, one of the environmental, um, sustainable energy.
You still waiting?
It was three days.
Okay.
It was very good.
So.
Did we adjourn?
November.
Yes.
So who are we, we used to give them the Judy and then, um, who are we giving the?
Yeah, the, your records.
The records to.